It was twenty-two round.
Have mercy.
Okay.
I could go. Okay. Hi.
Oh, we're, we're live.
We're on. Hi, everybody. Short. Lipstick break. All right. Welcome to our, um, school board meeting. I'd like to call the Monday, July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two school board meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Felton?
Here.
Inspector Walker?
Here.
Inspector Roche?
Here.
Inspector Weber?
Here.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Here.
Inspector Arant?
Here.
Chair Diaz?
Here.
At seven present at six o'clock?
Great, thank you. Uh, first up is the approval of our meeting agenda and minutes, and I'm looking for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for tonight, as well as the minutes from our, uh, Committee of the Whole meeting, June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, and our school board work session minutes from July twelve, twenty-twenty-two.
Pledge of allegiance.
We can come back to it. Uh, since I already called for a motion?
So moved.
Thanks.
Second.
Wonderful. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And now, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Sorry, plague. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Great. Thanks for being flexible. Even though you had no choice. All right. So very excited because, um, tonight for our quality in action is our community education director, Jean Zender, and program coordinator, Linda Jacob-Beus, um, to highlight the program, programming opportunities for our Central Square Community Center. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Zambrino, board members, community members. I am pleased to come and share with you what has happened at Central Square, uh, since moving in just over one year ago. So I'm gonna start out and do some highlights of our entire programming. Excuse me, I gotta dismiss something here so I can see my slide. Lisa was busy today. Oops. Okay, there we are. So, um, and in that process, we are now, uh, also overseeing our early learning program in Community Ed two. So here's just a highlight of how many of students and staff and folks have been in our classes. So we have had a hundred and eighteen youth in our ECFE class, uh, preschool screening. Kristen has screened a hundred and five students to date, uh, preschool, two hundred and twenty-six. Our school age care program is at two hundred and one. Uh, youth enrichment under Linda's leadership has had two hundred and thirty. Our gymnastics program is one of the programs that we, um, restarted when we moved into Central Square, so we have five hundred and forty-three youth participating. Um, our, uh, aquatics program, which we have a friend here who uses that every single morning, six days a week. We have a hundred and eighty-three folks doing lap swimming, uh, a hundred and eighty doing aqua interval with our fitness instructors, and two hundred and thirty of our seniors that participate in some sort of aqua class a week. Um, we have seen six hundred and ten, uh, adults come through our door and participate in fitness classes. Um, we have seven hundred and twenty-nine seniors who have participated in our fitness classes and our weekly activities. Uh, our adult enrichment has seen three hundred and twenty-two community members come in. Uh, GED, fifty-nine students, forty-six ELL students, and we had approximately six students, um, graduate this year and obtain their GED and move forward. Um, with the help of Linda Jacobs-Beus, the Minnesota Central Kitchen has served six hundred and fifteen meals weekly to our community members. And our fair-for-all has come back into, uh, play, and we see about a hundred families, um, come in, which we will see tomorrow, uh, evening. I'd like to add with our Minnesota Central Kitchen partnership, they now are delivering food on Mondays and Tuesdays, and on Tuesdays, there are two different meals that come in. So, um, pleased with all of that. One of the non-negotiables when we were, um, deciding what was gonna take place at Central Square was the, the breathing life into the senior center and having activities planned for our seniors. And so that came under Linda's watch, and I am gonna turn it over to her and a few of her guests that she brought, um, to talk about the success in our senior program.
Welcome, Linda.
Good evening. So our senior membership grows every single day. Um, I added three members today, so we have a hundred and fifty-seven members that are coming to our senior program. We do work so much for our seniors, and for ten dollars a year, um, they get to participate in all of our activities free of charge. We do, uh, morning buzz, so I make coffee every morning, and they can have that. We do have Walk the Square. We do advertise that as a temperature control, so when it's hot outside, it's cool inside, and if it's cold outside, it's hot in our robes. The lap swim and everything else you see on the board. Most particular that we do a lot of is the senior monthly socia's, but also every month our seniors get the opportunity to take a trip. And so this month, we just came back from Lake Geneva where we took, um, I took thirteen seniors from South St. Paul, but a total of fifty-three seniors between the three districts. And I have Jerry and Shirley here who came on our trip with us. And, um, we drove from here to Lake Geneva where we got to, um, ride in a deluxe motor coach and stop for dinner and go to the Dancing Horse Theater. We've also went and took the U.S. Mail Bolt Tour and had Popeye's Lunch, and we also got to go to the Black Painted Estates and Gardens, um, and then we had time to explore downtown Lake Geneva. Here's some more wonderful pictures of all the fun we had. And our mail, and our, um, mail delivery person. And then on our way home, we did stop at the North Freedom Travel Museum for the train. And here's more fun pictures. Anything you'd like to comment about, about our seniors and our trip?
Yeah, Linda did not lose one senior. We were on time. Dinner, lunch was always on time. It was always hot. They knew we were coming because of her planning, and it was really fun, and I highly recommend it to anybody. It's so fun.
It was a well-planned, organized trip. Uh, I think everyone loved it, and we got to meet some new seniors, had a great time, and I would definitely recommend it to anyone else again if the opportunity arises.
What was your favorite part of the trip? If we were to head out that way.
Favorite, uh, let's see.
Mine was the boat.
Really?
Yeah.
I liked the dancing horses.
And getting to, uh, meet seniors from different communities. Um, and even our community that one senior lives, I live in the two-hundred block, Twelfth Avenue North. She lives on Eleventh Avenue, two-hundred block. So I met her, and she used to work in the school district years ago when I was in school. So that was fun to reconnect.
I found the same situation from some people that lived just a few blocks from me that I did not know. And we came, we came friends and relatives and get together.
It was fun. Highly recommended.
Definitely. Thank you. Thank you.
Linda, was this trip taken on a bus?
Yes, so we rode in a sixty-passenger coach bus.
Motor, motor coach or whatever they call?
Yeah, from Minnesota coaches.
Okay.
I do have one more guest, Jim, and I wanted Jim to come today because he's been before and after. So he was here before he took over a year and twenty-five years ago, and he's still participating. So, Jim?
Yep.
Remembering his face?
Since, uh, Jeanie and Linda and Amy taking over, there's been quite a change in that, uh, senior center for, uh, all of us. And speaking for all of us, they're doing...
Why are you looking at me when you're speaking at all of us? Give me a break.
There's, since they've taken over, there's such a big change, and it's all been for the good. And everybody, I play cards three days a week and swim every day, and every one of them seniors that I've been with are praising the work they are doing. And they're not only that, they come out and, uh, talk to us. That never happened before. They intervene with us. And, uh, they say if you've got any ideas, you come to us and we'll see what we can do. We've never had so many projects in that place, and it's all been for the good. You've been doing a terrific job and a lot of, you can, you'll be hearing a lot of that from a lot of seniors. They think they're really great.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just would like to say, I wish Amy could've joined us tonight too, because, um, that was a huge undertaking, and this small, little, mighty department with the help of Linda and your support as a board and, you know, prior to Dr. Zambrino coming, Dave supporting us. Um, but without Linda and Amy, they are absolutely remarkable, and I just couldn't be more thrilled to have them as my partners in this fun, uh, place. And it does make a world of difference when you see a smile on someone's face because of what we've done.
When the right people are in the right place. Yeah.
So, thank you for the opportunity to come.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for everything.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming and telling us your story too. It's always good to hear. We enjoyed our time there when we did, uh, Sundays.
Yeah, we did.
Great. Oh, me. Moving on to the public listening session submissions, we had none this week. Um, and then Vice Chair Roche will talk about what we, um, or summarize what we talked about in our Committee of the Whole meeting.
Sure. So prior to every board meeting, um, we have a Committee of the Whole meeting, uh, which is where, um, a lot of our board workers. And so just to kind of give summary, because those, that's a meeting that does not happen on camera. Um, we're having a lot of discussions right now, and sort of the economic study of kind of the long-term stability and funding of our district is something that all of our eyes are on right now, and something we're devoting a lot of attention to. Um, some of the funding, two years out from now, looks daunting, um, a little bit, and so, um, we want to make sure that we're getting in front of that right away. So, um, if you want to have a whole bunch of nerdy math discussions, that's a certain discussion that's, uh, happening, um, during our Committee of the Whole meetings as a plan.
Great, thank you. And then, moving on to Dr. Zambrino, who'll give us some highlights.
All right. Well, thank you. Hard to follow that, uh, conversation around what's going on at, uh, Central Square there. It's just amazing and great to hear about that trip. Hopefully, we don't have too much feedback here. Slide deck going on the screen. Right, so always fun to get to talk about things going on in the district, and even though it's summer, there's, uh, quite a bit always going on as well. But we, uh, my three children and my wife, who are teachers, don't like all this talk about the next school year starting. They're like, wait, there's supposed to be a lot of summer left. And I know, uh, somebody on the board here mentioned their child seeing the back-to-school supplies at Target and having a little, yeah, there it is, uh, a little trauma there. But you know what? How exciting to think about getting to start another school year. So, um, we're starting to do that work and, um, put a lot of information on our website. So just want to make sure our families know that, uh, you can always go to our website, and if you haven't been on it recently, it's been completely overhauled. It looks great. Um, there's a staff login section there, so just give a shout out to, to that, and, um, Danette Childs, Lisa Brandecker, Paul, Vice Chair, others who've been working on the website. That's looking great. But, um, good information there on school supply list. You can review our handbook so you know what's expected at each of our sites, information around transportation, and of course, how to get support. So anytime you want to hop onto sspps.org, you can find information about current and upcoming events, or information you might need. Uh, the next one, a really big change coming this year around, um, the importance of our application for educational benefits. So we've spoken about that here, uh, before, but want to make sure our, our families are aware of that. We try to make it very easy to fill out the application. And we do ask that all families fill out the applications, because sometimes people don't know, um, what benefits they may qualify for. Uh, but you can log into, uh, the School Cafe account, and you can, uh, fill out the application there or opt-out. So we would know that you're, uh, not gonna apply this year. Uh, you can also download and print a paper application. We're happy to take, uh, paper applications at, uh, at your school site. And you can certainly call our Nutrition Services office at, uh, four-five-seven-six-five-one-four-five-seven-nine-four-two-nine. But again, a big change this year, uh, where the federal government during the pandemic had been providing everybody with the free lunch regardless of status, uh, filling out the application for educational benefits. That has sunset. And so for our families to qualify for free or reduced-price, uh, meals, we, uh, do need them to get that application in. So we're hoping to get a hundred percent completion rate so that everybody gets advantage. And I should add, um, it doesn't always just add advantages around, um, meals. So students get, uh, reduced rates for activities and things like that based on those as well. So, uh, that again on our website at sspps.org/nutrition. We have a very exciting fall coming up with lots of elections, but a very important one here for our school district. So we do have, um, school board elections, uh, this fall. So the filing period is August second to sixteenth, uh, August sixteenth, and that can be done at the City Hall. It is two dollars to, uh, express your interest in that and get your name on the ballot. We have four seats up for election this year, and definitely some that are, are open, and we're looking for people who want to come in and engage and help us make our schools the best place to work and go to school. So, uh, that election then will be on November eighth, and people will, um, get sworn in next winter. So, again, and more information on the website. As a reminder to our families, we know a lot of times, uh, there's just a lot of changes. Either we moved, we got a new phone number, uh, maybe there's new emergency contact for your child. So please, uh, get into the campus parent portal and make sure that the information is accurate. We're looking for sure around phone numbers, email address, any notification preferences, because as we share important information, we want to make sure that gets to the right folks in the family. And we, again, know things are dynamic, and sometimes those contacts and information change. So that can be accessed again at, uh, on our Infinite Campus Parent Portal. Kindergarten camp. So we've gotten through a lot of our summer programming, but we do have still our, uh, kindergarten camp for incoming kinders, and there is still room, uh, still time to get added to the list. That runs August first to the fourth, and it runs eight-thirty to eleven at Lincoln, nine to eleven-thirty at Capoja, and there are, uh, meals provided for our students, which is a great opportunity to come in, meet new friends, meet teachers, um, see the lay of the land of the school, learn how to do the lunch process, things like that. So, um, again, interested families can go to our website to find out more information. There is still room to get your child enrolled. And then along the lines of summer programming, we have wrapped up some of our other summer programming. So our elementary summer learning for grades one, uh, through five has wrapped up. Uh, kids had a great summer. Lots of hands-on learning, engaging with STEM projects at science, tech, engineering, and mathematics, uh, field trips. They kind of did fun opportunities, do, uh, in-house field trips as well as getting out. And, um, everybody got meals that were in attendance, and of course, the favorite is always getting popsicles. So we see a couple of kids, I think their tongues are probably turning red as we're looking at that picture. It's always fun. And then we had definitely a warm summer for popsicles. Our middle schoolers also had an opportunity for summer learning in grade seven and eight. Uh, they had, um, again, experiential learning, looking at, um, history of World War Two, the physics of roller coasters, uh, finding Pythagoras, which if we don't know, that's nice to know our middle schoolers know things we may not know. Uh, but each, there were two sessions, and each session ended with a trip to Valley Fair. So always a fun experience to get to do that with your peers. And then just a reminder, we're always trying to keep our social media up to date, so you can find this and other information, uh, being shared through our social media platforms, and as always, on our, uh, district website. And then we got important dates coming up. Like I said, I'm not trying to traumatize any children at home who may be in the background, plug your ears, but yes, actually, they're gonna be so thrilled to be back, because it's always so fun to come back to school. Uh, so first day of school coming up here, September sixth will be all students in grades one through five, six and nine, and then all students new, uh, in grade seven, twelve. We want to welcome them in. And then September seventh, we welcome back all of our seventh and eighth and tenth through twelfth graders. Kindergartners start a little bit later, so they start on September eighth, so the teachers can get in and get ahold of families and build some relationship there. And then September twelfth, all preschool students. So hard to believe we're knocking on the door. I know I'm super excited to see the start of the year. I got to see the end of a great year, and I get to see the start of another great year. Um, and as always, if you're interested in what's going on with our board, their meeting materials are available on our website. As always, lots of great things going on at the district, and, uh, fun to get a little glimpse.
Very fun. Thanks. Thanks for some of those summer pictures too. It's always fun to see.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, moving on to our consent items, and, um, just a reminder that consent items are items that come through each meeting that really don't need much discussion, including bills payable, claims, and our staffing report. Do I have a motion for the approval of our consent items tonight?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. And that motion carries. Um, there are no policies under review or need an approval at this time, so we can move on to our business items. Um, we have one business item on our agenda tonight, and it is, um, the approval for the agreement for the school district resource officer services between the South St. Paul Public Schools, uh, Special School District Six, and the City of South St. Paul effective September one, twenty-twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Wendy.
Second.
Thanks, Chris. Um, and do we have, uh, any discussion?
I can just quick jump in there.
Great.
For those who maybe remember before the pandemic, we had two SROs that supported our students, families, staff in the district. And when the pandemic hit, obviously, everybody was at home. So there wasn't quite the same need for that level of presence, and the presence was needed more, um, outside of our school buildings. And so the district moved from two school resource officers to one. And now, um, as, it was fun to get to come in and have this conversation around SROs, and always, uh, an important conversation about what the right role is for our SROs. And so, um, coming back in, there was outreach from our partners at the city to say they'd like to see us move back to two. Um, and so we sat down, great conversation with our, our building leaders, and Brady Hoffman joined me as well, our, um, Director Finance, to, to talk that through. And I, I think one of the positive things that came out of it was talking about how are we using these roles proactively and positively. Um, we're not interested in our schools being a place that are punitive, but relationship-building and, and supportive. Um, and I know there's just a lot of great ways our SROs can support our families and things like that. So, um, Chief Wiki is a great, uh, partner, those who know him. He's very present and engaged in the community and, and shares that philosophy around, you know, proactive and positive approaches. And so excited to partner with them, and, and this would, uh, get us back to two, two SROs, and which would also allow us some, some flexibility for things like our elementaries where they have really busy traffic crunches at arrival and dismissal, and just being able to have a, a safety presence there to make sure our kiddos and families are able to get in and out of the school safely. So, um, we are, that's what's on the agenda here.
Thank you. Mr. Zambrino, um, board members, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Um, and moving on to our board member reports, our committee updates, or anywhere that you have seen a passion, we can start down with. Who?
I just want to mention that the Athletic Hall of Fame for the year twenty-twenty-two has been decided. We have, uh, five new candidates going in. It will take place, uh, homecoming weekend, which I think is October first, and the public is invited. Um, we have a, a very strong class, and I'm very proud of the selections we've made.
Thanks. I know you'll probably hear this from others as we go down, um, but it is summer, and the South St. Paul Community Theater will be doing their production this, um, this weekend. So encourage you all to go see it.
I'm gonna double down on that.
On my list.
We have tickets for the show. It opens on Thursday. I'm very excited for it. Also, The Open, um, just had their golf tournament and, um, fundraiser, and, um, that was a really, really great event that helps support, um, some of the activities and athletics within, um, for our youth in our community.
Great. Nothing for me at this time? Nikki?
Just a big thank you to the South St. Paul Parks and Recs for, um, the giant water slide at, on Jefferson Hill. The kids were lined up from the top of the hill all the way down the hill, all the way out to where the hockey boards are. And, but, um, people just had a blast. And I think it was just a wonderful community, um, gathering, and I, I would really love to see more of the, more of that. So thank you to everybody who made that happen.
And they actually stayed late, right, to, to make sure that all the kids were able to have turns? Yeah, that's great. Chris?
Good. Um, just looking forward to seeing all of you out at the Night to Unite coming up next week. So it's a good opportunity for the school representatives, i.e. the board, to get out and, and talk with people and, uh, hear what your concerns are, what you're thinking, or just to have a hot dog with you. So we'll see you next week.
Yeah, Wendy?
Yes, I too am looking forward to attending the theater performance this weekend, Matilda the Musical. Looking forward to that, the community theater performance. We always appreciate Mr. Holson for everything that he does for our community with, with this program. Looking forward to that. And I also was fortunate enough to be able to attend the South St. Paul Open Dinner, that South View Country Club. And the honorees for this year was the two thousand and two girls' high school hockey team. That hockey team, which I personally knew many of the players, because they graduated with my daughter. And they, uh, were the, they won the first state title hockey tournament for our, our girls' hockey team. And they finished their season that year with the twenty-nine victories and only two losses for the whole season. So we congratulate the girls' hockey team from back in two thousand and two, as they started a several-year wonderful promotion. And a huge thank you out to also to the Open Foundation for everything that they do for our students in athletics and activities. And as Mr. Arant had mentioned, the Hall of Fame, which is, which will be coming up this fall. The date is Friday, September thirtieth, which is homecoming night. And the Hall of Fame winners for this year, Paul Kennedy, class of sixty-six, Lori Larson, class of seventy-six, Cory Nedu, class of eighty-nine, Brian Horst, class of ninety-five, Joe Munyas, class of twenty-twelve, and this nineteen-seventy-nine girls' softball team are, are receiving the Hall of Fame honors this year. So we congratulate them. And I just want to put out a, another huge thank you to, to Jean Zender and Linda Jacobs-Beus and Amy Tredle, who work at this, at the Community Center, the Senior Center that I serve on also on that Board of Directors. And it, it is a great, great program, as they talked about the tours and the different things that they do every month. It's a wonderful, uh, the Senior Center does a lot of things. You know, they have a, a weekly, you, you can play a lot of different bingo games, different activities that, that you can do. And, uh, we look forward to a lot of events. So anyone, we appreciate anybody in age fifty-five and over can join the Senior Center and become active on some of the tours. I know we're going to Footloose at Shanassan Dinner Theater is coming up, so that's always a fun activity. And there'll be some holiday parties coming up, so a lot of, a lot of different fun things for, for South St. Paul community members. So we thank Linda, Jean, and Amy so much for everything that they do over there. They do a great job. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. And, uh, that's it for our agenda tonight. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our Monday, July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks. Um, any discussion? Probably not. And that motion carries. The meeting is adjourned at?
Six-thirty.
Thanks.
Thank you.